Morning, everybody. We begin our meeting with the Board of Regents.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands by my nation and my God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just to just. It only has to ever know.
Morning, everybody. Welcome to the Rutherford County Commissioners Meeting of July twenty fifth. Let me explain. Good morning. And on Zoom, we have the Sheriff, Major Catherine, and we, I think that's all for now. I'm sure others will join us as we move along. In the room, we have Kendra Nayal, we have Chuck Nicholson, Jason Henry, Superintendent Allison Kowalski, we have J. Gates, we have Commissioner Coyle, Commissioner Godu, we got Leila, and myself on the chair, Brian Churchill. So we're going to begin with our people. Does that begin with me? Our openings for Motorola equipment.
I move to award the proposal for Motorola equipment to Two Way Communication Services Incorporated, Motorola Solutions, for an amount not to exceed fifty seven thousand, seven hundred and four dollars and seventy six cents, as recommended by the High Chair.
Second. Most of them were made and seconded. Is there any introduction, Commissioner Foil?
Um, so it sounds like we only got one bid. Did the other, you said you reached out to three people, but only one came in on time? Did the other two submit late? Do we have?
No, so Motorola, we put this out to bid because of our RSA and our rules on bid policy. But when Motorola bids, they only allow certain service shops to bid. It's like a territory type thing. So it's very common, anything Motorola related is usually just one bid, either from Motorola Direct or through their service shop, which are local territories, Two Way Communications.
Okay. And so how do we know in terms of, you know, it's kind of like sole source, I understand, but how do we know in terms of, you know, the amount is, how to compare with last year, for instance?
Um, well, it all depends on what we're purchasing. It's not the same purchase every year. We have different projects. Um, so this year, I mean, we're at least, uh, I think it was just over thirteen thousand dollars under budget with this bid. Um, which it feels, you know, pretty good. Their prices are, you know, they'll usually let us know if they expect an industry-wide, you know, increase, you know, in future, you know, as we budget.
But the bottom line is they do kind of have a corner in the market, and when you're locked into a certain product, you can't mix a lot of the equipment. It has to continue to be Motorola. And let's face it, these companies, they know that. But that's why we, but that's why instead of just trying to do it as sole source, we still at least throw it out to bid in case something has changed where there are other opportunities for other people to bid, but it still ends up usually just being the one, the one bid because of their regional contracting issues.
Right. Plus, it's nice, too, if we have a brawl with the radio, they're in Rockingham County, so we can just take it right up there, or they can come down here.
Okay.
Further comments? If not, on motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes. We are already on the consent agenda.
I move to approve the July eighteenth, twenty twenty four Public and Non-Public Meeting Miss.
Second.
Most of them are made and seconded. Either we need additions or some traction. They didn't look good. Yeah, I think.
I have a, a really small one, but it's just a little typo.
Okay, which one? Public or non-public?
Uh, public.
Okay.
Uh, controlled equipment requests and public hearing discussion. Lieutenant Cunningham explained why they want to request the drone, the feature of the drone, features of the drone, and then there's a word A T H E, which I'm not sure what it's supposed to be, but.
The one between.
Maybe and, I, I.
Interesting. Oh. I think it's in the training that will be involved and how, yeah, it's supposed to be and that, I mean.
Any, any other correction, you know?
No, I was just a minor typo, but.
All right, so, um, should be, so the motion to fix that and prove it on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Yes.
Surplus equipment request.
I move to approve a surplus equipment request presented to New Hampshire RSA twenty eight eight A and declare a Hobart dishwasher and sanitizer from the Department of Corrections surplus with the item to be disposed of.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Excited to have the new dishwasher there.
Clean dishes are a good thing.
Yeah, and it, just as part of this, the, I think the installer, they're actually getting, handling the removal and disposal of that dishwasher, so that's a.
That's the difference.
Yes.
On the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Surplus equipment request, long term.
I move to authorize the sale of surplus televisions to county employees for a nominal fee of one to five dollars with the remaining televisions to be disposed of.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Are these like all non-functioning TVs or, because some of them, like five years old, or TV didn't seem particularly old.
Yeah, my TV's five years old.
So some of the TVs are old. They've been replaced as we are upgrading our TVs to forty inch for the residents as they're able to have streaming services. So a lot of them have been sitting in storage. And the reason we're looking to sell them, or it has been recommended between one and five dollars, is because the cost to pay for them to be taken away would be more costly than it would be to sell. Um, so they're very tiny TVs. They don't have streaming services available, so you can't hook up a Roku or stream Netflix or anything. It's just a basic television. Um, as we're upgrading TVs that are not functional and then nursing.
Further comment?
A dollar to five dollars seems like we're just giving it away, and the money is going towards the residence fund for uh, activities and such. I just wonder if there should be a little bit more than that, or, I don't know.
I guess it depends on the condition of the TV. So I think, yeah, I know, I'm like, I'll defer to, um, because, you know, the overall impact is nominal and.
It would, it would be nice if people are going to take the TVs, or multiple TVs, that they just make a donation that, you know, free will, I mean, suggesting one dollar is like suggesting that they don't have to pay. You know, and it would be nice to get a little donation for the residents, but I'm not stuck on this. It just seems a little too low.
Sure, I can go back to Sam, but my understanding is that the TVs, I mean, they're, yeah, they're not really worth anything, and they're, they're very, they're small.
Yeah. I know in my town, a dairy could get rid of a TV's cost of twenty five bucks.
Right, right.
Yeah, what does it cost us?
Um, it goes by the weight of the, of everything that we would try to dispose of.
And do you think? We're doing annual recycling and we, we accumulate through the year and have it all recycled at once. Some pieces cost more than others to get rid of. Monitors, for example, are very expensive, whereas other pieces.
All right, so I'm on, I'm on the original motion, so I didn't hear an amendment to motion, so.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll.
On the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Foil?
Yes.
I agree, yes. Can we do motion one?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry, no, I, um, we were, uh, I think I started there. Motion one, did I read one?
No, I think you do. I think you bet two.
Okay. So I'm sorry, I went out of turn. I move to approve a surplus equipment request pursuant to New Hampshire RSA twenty eight eight A. No, I read that and declare thirty six older TVs a very.
All right, so I didn't take a motion on the first one, so on motion number one, um, on that motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
And then, well, yes, I think we are, we just did motion two, so we go onto the accounts payable list.
And we'll approve the July twenty fifth, twenty twenty four fiscal year twenty twenty four accounts payable list total of one million, three hundred and seventy two thousand, eight dollars and twenty four cents.
Motion's been made.
Um.
Off second.
Okay, but I'm.
Now, now we're into questions.
I, 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 okay, so I'm, I'm looking, we're, we're on the percent agenda, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
And what, what number?
First motion. One million, three hundred and seventy two thousand.
Okay, all right. I'm sorry, I lost my place.
Yeah.
You all set?
Yes.
All right, so on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes. Now, motion two.
I move to approve the July twenty fifth, twenty twenty four fiscal year twenty twenty five accounts payable list total of two million, nine hundred and fifty thousand, four dollars and sixty seven cents.
Yes.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any comments on this one?
So this one is the, this is for prospective, and this is largely contracted nursing, as well as some software um, packages and, um, uh, pride care.
Further comment? Not on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Foil?
Yes.
I vote yes. Accounts payable list.
I move to approve the July twenty sixth, twenty twenty four fiscal year twenty four accounts payable list total of seven hundred and twenty eight thousand, four hundred and sixty six dollars and fifteen cents, pending Executive Committee approval of several line item transfers.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion?
And this is all just clean up from contracted nursing from twenty twenty four. Not all, by and large.
Further comments? If not, on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
As well as blending, yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Yes. All right, on to reports.
Thank you, Chuck, for your detail, just as a, I mean, it's so helpful when, with these, um, the summaries with the details of where things are coming from, by and large, um, you really make it easy to process and understand, so thank you.
Updates. Anyone have anything?
Pass today.
Yeah, everyone, a word, a word. Thank you. I hope everybody is having a nice summer.
Let's do Department of Corrections, the inmate administrative transfer.
I move to approve an inmate administrative transfer dated July seventeenth, twenty twenty four, transferring one inmate to Coop County Department of Corrections pursuant to New Hampshire RSA thirty dash B twenty one, as recommended by the Department of.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? Seeing none on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Foil?
Yes.
Uh, travel and training request.
I move to approve a travel and training request for two Department of Corrections employees, P S and J B, to attend the Women in Law Enforcement Summit to be held November seventeenth, nineteenth, twenty twenty four in Atlanta, Georgia, at an estimated total cost of five thousand, forty nine dollars, as recommended by the Superintendent.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion on this?
Think it's going to be a big conference.
Um, yes.
Go ahead.
And it's not really this specifically. I just want to be sure that we're keeping track of these expenses. There's an awful lot of money we spend on travel and training. Do we double check with our, uh, is this like approved through finance that it's already, you know, that it's within the budget and, and all that? How do we manage to make sure that we're not over budget?
Well, there's one line item, so the parts were responsible for line item. As far as making sure that everything's in the actual submission, all the approvals, and so going to the policy, um, finance people do look at, at that part of it.
But.
So we, we put the, but, but the parts responsible for their.
Superintendent?
So you should.
Responsible under the use of the department heads, they have line item budgets for travel, training, and all this kind of stuff in different, in different areas. So it's, it's.
So you're keeping track of your.
Yes.
Travel and training budget.
For G O C.
And for G O C, right, and, and this fits within that. Oh, yes, right, yeah, okay, all right, I just, I wasn't sure what the process was.
Department head in, um, Division Director, they, it's like, I think they, they're pretty strategic about what training, what budget, how many people.
Yeah.
And I mean, it's actually allowed, the budget module actually allows you to do an itemized line item budget, like for me, the finance, I actually put in surprise individual conferences and their estimated costs, and then it just totals up the amount, and that's the amount that's requested for the line.
Fantastic.
Uh, on motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Foil?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Two gold stars, gold.
Human Resources, use of ARPA project funds request for assisted living?
Yes, I move to approve utilizing funds from the ARPA, uh, project, uh, under Treasury Expenditure Category two point seven Job Training Assistant to pay the one thousand, six hundred and fifty dollar tuition, as well as mileage reimbursement for CAM to participate in the twenty twenty four Leading Age Leadership Academy, as recommended by the Human Resources Manager.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion?
I do. I, um, I think this is great, um, the training itself, but I, I question why this is an ARPA fund and not, as we talked about, just part of the training budget.
I can speak to that. Um, so that they have a national leadership academy, um, that Jason and I researched at moving into this budget year, um, that we had looked at and thought about potentially budgeting for. Um, once we realized we were over on nursing staff funds, we decided not to include that in our budget. This Leadership Academy is not national. It is offered by Leading Age Massachusetts, um, and it was opened on July eighteenth um, to welcome members from the, um, the Leading Age New Hampshire and Maine chapters. So it was not anything that was foreseeable for us. It's the first time they've opened it up to New Hampshire and Maine. Um, and that was open on July eighteenth, and the application was due July twenty third. So there is no way for us to foresee that.
Okay.
So there was no budget for.
For that.
This specifically.
That's fine, and that you have your other trainings for other individuals already identified.
Further discussion?
Can I ask, um, Chuck, I don't, is that the right?
It should be different expenditure category, but.
All right, what is it? Do you know?
Well.
Because there's a motion, so.
Well, training supplemental stuff, as far as as meant for, like, the, I don't know what position this is, but for more like the lower positions, M and A, M and L and A training type stuff, that was two point one, that Treasury moved it to under the final version of the final.
Okay.
Okay, so if you want.
I'll just amend two point seven to two point one. Nonetheless, it is, or strike the category and say job training assistant.
All right. So on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Foil?
Yes.
Now, yes. Pilot grant program, job wages recommendation?
I move to increase the rate of pay offered for the case manager grant position from twenty four dollars and four cents to per hour to twenty eight dollars per hour, and authorize the chair to sign all necessary documents in accordance with the provisions of the county pilot to delay or defer institutional care grant with New Hampshire D H H S, as recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources and Senior Director of Funds.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion?
Uh, yes, I do.
Go ahead.
I'm questioning whether this is adequate to attract, uh, the proper employees. I looked at the records of how you came up with these numbers. Um, and the fifty percent range, is that, what does that mean? What?
It's fifty percent of the median market back in twenty three. We would have gone typically to seventy five percent of the market, however, um, that is going to impede upon the program manager's position that's at thirty four oh three. So we would have been circumventing that position. Chuck and I and Jessica discussed it at I am, and we feel that the program manager is placed accurately. This does not require any kind of L and A, uh, excuse me, LPN RN, because all the clinical aspects of this job is done at the site. Um, Jessica was able to kind of talk me through that. So this is somebody that's actually doing, gathering the data entry, reaching out more of kind of like a patient rep when we aligned all the jobs and the Bureau of Labor Statistics. That one really matched kind of what this person is actually going to be doing. Had I.
But the seventy five percent was, I, I don't remember.
Brings it over, um, it, it brings it over where the program manager would be. Seventy five percent, um, would bring it to thirty six, thirty five, and the program manager's at thirty four, um, in some sense, too.
Yeah, so you'd have to really.
Okay.
You'd have to boost both if you were going to do that.
Has this been job been advertised at twenty four?
Yes.
And how many applications have we had?
Maybe three or four.
Nothing that was acceptable that we liked?
Commissioner Foil?
And, and that's my, that's my concern.
And it was, and that's why we brought it forward. I did talk about maybe moving the program manager wage, but there was some hesitation on that, right, pretty so, because the position's been filled and that person's in that position. And they're actually overseeing all of it. They're going to be overseeing the case manager and the transporters, and Jessica's on this, speak to that a little bit more. But I have no hesitation either way. I, I brought it up. I used the fifty percent of the market, but I'm also using Boston Cambridge, which we started to use because our pay plan is like sixty percent. We didn't go to eighty percent. We went to sixty on our current pay plan. So I'm really trending the Mass border over Nashua, the Mass border over here, that way. So we've started to use, Chuck and I've started to use that basis.
Commissioner Bla?
Or do you want to, Chuck, did you?
Well, just that in my office before we, for emergency rental assistance, we had a case major type position, too, and it was less than twenty eight.
Mm-hmm, so.
My. For that.
If I may, um, I also just want to point out that, you know, four dollars an hour does equate to about eight thousand a year. So even though, you know, it might not seem, it, it, so in, in our minds, in our conversation, we, we did think that this was a pretty significant increase and enough to attract, um, different candidates, as well as the fact that it is a fully remote position as well.
And I, I feel like the point, what we should do is let's move forward with this. And if we, like, let's test the waters. If we get applicants, if we get an increase in applicants, we'll see that it's, we're at market, right? But if, if we, we can always go up, like, we can always make a more substantial adjustment if we need to, if what we're seeing is we're having the same shortage of applicant pool, so.
Do we have that option to go back to the well and discuss it again?
We, yeah, we, with the prior meeting, we discussed the, with New, New Hampshire D H H S, how to modify, and the thing is, the total grand amount won't change as long as you stay within your own budget categories. It's only an informational filing with D H H S. As far as, well, these positions are now going for this amount, and if you've seen the narrative, we believe that, you know, we, uh, we could actually drop one of the caregivers slash transporters.
Right.
And that would free up some monies, and so in the future, we might be talking about a, uh, moving amounts to different budget categories, maybe to a handsome amount of assistance that the two remaining M D C, um, organizations can provide, uh, participation in this program.
Well, with that in mind, uh, I'm good with twenty eight for now, then we can review it if it's not working.
Okay, further discussion? Not on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes. General leave?
I move to approve a general leave request for an assisted living employee M S, with counting portion of all benefits, to continue for the period of July eighteenth, twenty twenty four through July twenty ninth, twenty twenty four, as recommended by the Human Resources Manager and Assisted Living General Manager.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any comments? Question in this one?
Yeah.
I don't know, uh, so on, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Bla?
Yes.
I vote yes. Long-term care services, um, Cheryl Schmidt, uh, Internal Administrator, and Kendra Nayal, Assistant Living General Manager. Some requests for use of special revenue.
I move to approve the use of us, of the Special Revenue Fund, S R F, for the purchase of a community kitchen oven and a commercial dryer for assisted living resident use at an estimated total cost of three thousand, forty eight dollars and seventy five cents.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion?
Wow, my line of discussion is, have you guys checked, the only, having purchased many appliances for various properties? Um, Barron's, I didn't know, I noticed that they were, you don't have to go out to bid for this because it's three thousand dollars, but that, um, I've used Barron's major appliance for a lot of things for these types of things, and that sometimes if you bundle it, you might get a slightly better rate, but, um, you know, obviously, where you're at is mine.
Um, I can speak to Sam. I believe part of the reasons why we went with the vendor that we went through, um, is that the dimensions and the ability to get the appliance in quicker, um, because we have a full house of residents.
Yes.
Um, so, and being able to replace those appliances in a swift manner so that they have access to them, um, is helpful to our residents.
Sure. I mean, I don't have any, I'm just saying.
So on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Yes.
I vote yes. Dartmouth Hitchcock Consolidated Billing Services Agreement.
I move to approve the Dartmouth Hitchcock as an consolidated billing services agreement for the period beginning June twenty sixth, twenty twenty four, for a term of one year with automatic renewals for successive one-year terms, and authorize the, the chair to sign all necessary documents.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Yes, there was a, a change in the contract. Uh, uh, Primex had recommended some changes to the contract, and, and then, uh, Dartmouth Hitchcock, uh, made an additional change, which I don't think that we ran by Primex, and maybe it's not significant. And essentially, the issue is that, um, the, um, the request, the, the recommendation from Prime, Primex, was to, for indemnification, for instance, was that Dartmouth Hitchcock would, shall defend, uh, and indemnify. Um, and they changed it to each party.
Usually we land on the mutual indemnification. I think that's like just standard for.
We always, when we get from Primax, that always happens, and then we send that, we send the contract back, and it always comes back, mission indemnification. Um, because I think several of our contracts have come back like that.
Yeah.
Okay, so there's, there's no issue with that. It's just, that's not what Primex recommended, that's.
Primex always recommends full coverage.
For everybody else, and then.
Yeah.
Okay, fair enough. I just noted that. I wanted to bring it up for discussion.
Make sure where we landed.
Yeah.
On the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes. Travel and training request?
I move to approve a travel and training request for two long-term care employees, the new administrator and J W, and an assisted living employee K M, to attend the Leading Age Annual Meeting to be held October twenty seventh through thirtieth, twenty twenty four, in Nashville, Tennessee, at an estimated total cost of nine thousand, five hundred and fifty four dollars, as recommended by the Inter-Administrative.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? Seeing none on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
And, yeah, pop and head up this, we're going to go to the sheriff first. I want him.
Continue to be busy over here. Um, nothing really new to report, but I, I had a problem this morning. I had a meeting with Superintendent, uh, Jason Henry this morning, and those red shoes that he's wearing this morning, my eyes are still killing me from it.
I'm actually calling bowling alleys to see if they're missing a pair.
Yeah. Wow, you guys are brutal.
And they're brutal this morning.
That's about it. Just don't, just don't look at his shoes today because you could go blind, all right? Have a good day.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Oh, you're welcome.
I thought only the Pope was supposed to wear red shoes.
Between that and Dunkerew, I don't want to tell you, so.
Appreciate it. Chuck Nicholson?
Um, again, every month following quarter end is fun filing time with grants and other payroll filings, so uh, especially the, this, this month, there's two separate filings for ARPA. So one is the long narrative one, that each project is discussed in a longer format, and then the other one is the traditional quarterly, portal filing, which is still pretty lengthy, but not as long as the each narrative one. So, uh, so the narrative, long narrative one just happens once a year. It's for the, I mean, you know, the six thirty period, so work on that a bit. I actually had, uh, Representative Michael Kayle reach out for the new market. Um, I guess they're looking at, the town is looking at possibly doing a solar array, where they can have to help for offsets, and so I, I sent them a uh, reply email and a bit of information on some of the credits available through the direct slash elective pay credits that nonprofits and government and the agencies can avail themselves of from the, uh, what is it, Clean Reduction Act. So where it can be up to forty percent, but that includes ten percent, ten of that forty is, uh, is the Buy Build America, Buy America Act requirements. So that's the same kind of credit that we'll be able to take advantage of for the solar array. As long as, uh, I can get provision to give us, not Davis Bacon certified payrolls, but some proof that, um, they're basically meeting or beating the prevailing wages for the area for certain positions, then we can get twenty four percent credit for that and the basic six percent credit, so thirty percent on an almost ten million dollar project, so. So that net, if you want to think about net purpose, and that's how Merrimack County budget theirs, that amount. That's how they had like the seven millions because they're back there forty percent credit in.
Oh, my gosh.
Maybe not thinking about the, the, the Buy Build America, Buy America, so.
Yeah.
So they'll probably be down to more of a, you know, thirty percent credit, too, but, um, but yeah, so we'll be down more to like a six point six million dollar.
Cost.
Cost, net cost, so.
Well, that frees up some money, a little bit of extra money in the, um, uh, not the lost revenue category for ARPA, right?
Well, this is the thing. So the credits, it's what's framed, so unlike any other time, we actually, the county, we had to file a, a tax attorney with I R S to actually get the credit, so it'd be a Form nine ninety dash T, and you can only, you have to first register to get a number as far as your clean energy, you know, um, property, and you can only do that after it's been placed in service, so this is going to be drawn up.
Money, three million dollars that the county will see a few years down the road.
Yes, because we're June thirty year end, so our tax return will be due like two and a half months after that, so it would be, it's already a couple of years.
That's.
We're still using all that money from ARPA.
For now, but if we get the credit, I mean, like.
Get three, three million of revenue afterwards.
And will we get that? Will there be restrictions on?
And will we get that, will there be restrictions on that revenue?
It's like a tax refund.
Right, okay, it's, okay, win-win.
It'll be in our intergovernmental revenue in the general, you know, general government, uh, you know, revenue line, so. So good news there. Um, and also the E B charging stations, when they're completed, also qualify.
That's great.
So that would be something probably on a uh, what, I guess a six thirty twenty five tax return that we would do to get, you know, up to, you know, the the thirty percent credits on that too. So good news for our credits, but President K. O. was thankful for the information and, you know, again, just they're trying to do whatever they can to reduce the cost to their taxpayers, but still, you know, going to be more energy efficient and, you know.
It's kind of nice for them to give you a call, give the county a policy. Just kind of shows that we're going time and forth on that, so that's good.
Uh, let's see, payroll's working on uh, reviewing all the forms for the mid-year um, or relatively speaking, turn time, holiday cash outs. Um, we haven't seen any personal officers, you mean, individuals take advantage yet, but.
Yep, their um, their personnel change forms went out a little bit later than the rest of the guys. Um, they just, our team wasn't aware of.
Most first staff knew that it happened, time to even, even trying to cash out, may- maybe come next year, you're up to.
Gonna be small number.
Yeah. But um, but I think our team would love, then that'll be nice for people to see that in their checks. Um, and then, you know, again, just overall, this irregular, this thing has to. So.
Nice.
And the reminder, though, most of the parts, I mean, I wouldn't think of attending, but tomorrow is the county emergency executive committee meeting to address the six line transfers. And that's why there's a separate P O C A P list, because we have to wait technically until those transfers are through before the checks can be processed and just.
Makes sense, all right. Thanks, Chuck, this is dude.
Good morning.
One.
All of well and so this operations. We're busy, you know, business as usual, we're grateful for the break in the weather.
Sure.
Um, we were so happy just to see the rain yesterday. Um, we're dealing with the stripping and ceiling at the parking lot went well. We're getting ready for that major plumbing repair at the jail on Monday. We're um, dealing with a plumbing challenge in the front door of the kitchen right now, both of my master plumbers are working on it. Probably um, doing some meaningful infrastructure repair and piping. Um, other than that, I'm talking right on.
Thanks, Drew.
Thank you.
Uh, Kevin.
Good morning, everybody, um, assisted living is um, census is at forty nine. Um, things are going really well over there, we are prepping for our assisted living week, which will happen in September. Um, so we'll have lots of fun events going on. Nursing home is doing well, um, over this past week, we have had a COVID positive staff member. However, they were someone who was out and away from the facility over the past two weeks on vacation. Um, so it does not affect any of our in-house um, other staff and or residents. Um, we have had two people who are currently training and working, have stepped up into the infection preventionist um, position, and they are working to get their certifications, um, so more to come on that. And then just all things survey prep, as we are waiting for them to show up, hopefully sooner rather than later.
Yeah, right. Very good, thank you. Um, Jason Henry.
Currently one fifty five inside, um. Let's say we've been getting inundated with applications, which is awesome, so again, knock on wood, they getting us to the market value, which again, always hear from is getting the county to market value and things, draws people in, so we're doing very, very well in that aspect. Um. Might be a glad a little few issues the other week, the Jude Gates Department getting on top of it and took care of it right away. Today, tomorrow, we have the dishwasher project, uh, the old one going out, then we're coming in. Uh, the reason why Jude stepped out was a little bit, we have a little leak above it, that uh, it's gotta be taken care of, and Jude's already on top of that, that will get that repaired and fixed somehow, uh. And beyond that, all else is going great, I do have a, just like a couple quick non-publics.
First off, A, I wanna see those red shoes.
Come on, you put up there.
Oh, look at that.
Just you know, just you know, Marvin the Martian turned seventy six today, so.
It goes along with socks.
Uh-huh.
All right. The younger generation may not know what that is.
That's true.
Very good, uh, Allison.
Hey, good morning, we've just been doing, we did the earned time holiday cash out forms and stuff like that, motivate me also has gone over. Um, so that will be coming out in August, we did the data entry and, or actually the audit of that. It's just been uh, catch-up time with uh, year end and just trying to get things back. Autumn is back in track from
Yeah.
Having her time off and her marriage, so she is in there uh, jumping right back into things, so I do have an update on L and A stuff that I can talk about about in your business.
Okay, okay, perfect, um. Leila.
Morning. Um, I just wanna remind everyone that annual reports. I, sorry. Already complete. Um, I did add a pop-out tab on the registry of deeds, um, tab on our website as well as the department's, I put a link on the department's page.
So good, I'll take a look.
For that property fraud alert, um. And I did create the legal notice for the public hearing for the Sheriff's Strong Program.
Saw that.
Um, I just need to go ahead on that.
Yeah, I think it's fine. I'm. Health commission, you're okay?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Oh, okay.
When is vacation time coming?
Two weeks.
Two more weeks, okay.
What are we doing that week, are we doing just payroll?
Well, only when you guys are meeting with, right, the long-term.
The update. Obviously.
Okay. Great, so I think I think we covered everybody, um, gonna go to new businesses, anyone have any new business, Allison, I know you do, right?
Um, I just wanted to kind of give you an update of where we are with L and A applications, we're gonna start getting a new one, um. Bottoms developed template, so we'll keep everybody up to date on them, but since July third through um, July twenty third, we had six applicants, four full-time, one part-time, one per D M. For the previous weeks, we had fourteen overall, so out of those statuses, um, two are not moving forward. One was an out-of-country application, so they can't work in the United States. Another one just had a lot of um, gaps and their reasons for leaving their other employer didn't align with us. The outreach was to twelve, so six voicemails, emails, and we haven't heard back. Four were connected into and they had interest. Out of that, two um, were not interested because they had accepted other positions. Interviews that were actually scheduled were four, we had two no-call, no-shows, one not moving forward with no response to why. And one is moving forward, so we have one accepted off.
All right.
One out of seven.
All right, well, it is what it is.
One, I'll take one.
Better than zero.
Better than zero. I would just like to say too, that, you know, the no-shows, no-calls, it's just horrible, it's, we get it all the time, no-calls, no-shows. It seems to be indicative of our past, I would say, four or five years, it has really climbed up of no-call, no-shows, it's just a different people you're dealing with. Yeah, it's very frustrating.
And it's.
You don't apply, you're not gonna fall through.
Or just make a phone call, say, try on something else.
We give emails, phone calls, numbers, nothing.
It's just like not showing up to any appointment, you feel like.
We have staff waiting after file, yeah, sometimes.
Right.
That's what I'm talking about, these schedules.
Right. It's just like, what'd you say?
Brian was suggesting that um, it it could.
Show a lot of employment, that you'd have to get your act applying.
So you're applying. We get some of those, they start weeding them out, cause now we can start seeing, especially indeed, you start seeing same sort of against, we we try to weed those out, you know, like, okay, we see you again, this is, you know, no-call, no-shows, we can run a list to make sure.
But, you know what, it's a numbers game, really, uh, and so that's just proving it. That we just gotta go from the numbers to get to where we wanna go, our goal is, so.
The tablet's great.
Yeah. All right, any, any other new business, anyone? Okay, um, any old business? No. Uh, and then we got public comment, anybody in the public wish to speak? Let's see, um, I see Bill, I think that, I think he's gonna give me a round, Bill, right? Yeah, I think, you know, no?
No.
All right, so William W., I if you wanna say anything, if you're on the phone, I think it's star nine, this could uh, tough to talk. I'll give you a minute if you want, if not, we're just gonna move on. Well, I don't see, I don't see, exactly, that's, okay. Um, so now I'll entertain a motion, if we go into a non-public.
I move to enter just found public, it's turned to the manual A, call three, section two A, since no matter.
No second made and seconded, motion, Commissioner Boyle.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, thank you, everybody. Have a great week, weekend. All right. Okay, so we're coming out of non-public, um, and Commissioner Boyle has a motion.
Okay. Movements, um, we had six non-publics. The first, uh, with respect to a investigation, I move to seal those minutes um, indefinitely, cause it could re- render a proposed action ineffective, and we don't have um, a firm date on its conclusion.
Motion's been made, seconded, on the motion, Commissioner.
Yes.
Commissioner Boyle.
Yes.
I vote yes.
Uh, we had for items number two, three, four, and six, which is, um, I uh, I move to seal those minutes indefinitely because uh, it could adversely affect the reputation of someone other than a member of this board.
Certainly made and seconded on the motion, Commissioner Boyle.
Yes.
Commissioner Godu.
Yes.
I vote yes.
And finally, um, on the fifth issue is relative to long-term care, I move to seal those minutes until September third, twenty twenty four. Uh, because um, it could render a proposed action ineffective.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded on the motion, uh, Commissioner Godu.
Yes.
She boil?
Yes.
I'll vote yes.
And I move to adjourn.
Second.
Follow, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we are done.